Dear God and Heavenly Father, I come before you this evening to humbly ask your assistance in guiding this board to make decisions solely motivated by the love for Spotsylvania County and improvement of our quality of life. As elected officials, we seem too often to forget our duty is to combine our individual talents by working closely together in furtherance of our county's future and not our own. Please guide us towards fulfilling this goal and bless and watch over our citizen participants in this process. We ask this in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we go to consent agenda, I just have one announcement. The broadcast tonight will not be able to be livestreamed where there are some issues, bandwidth issues, I think with Verizon. You'll be able to, people will be able to see it on Comcast, but they won't be able to livestream it. However, tomorrow, they'll be able to see it, the archived version of it. But I just want to make that announcement tonight. So if someone gets a phone call or a text saying we can't get it, only Comcast people will get it. The first item on the agenda is the consent resolution. Basically, a brief synopsis. Item three is appointment of county administrator to boards and commissions effective June 1st. Mark Taylor will become the Spotsylvania County Administrator and will need to be appointed to all the boards and commissions in placing and retiring of my retirement. Item four is appointment of Rapid Hand Area Youth Services and Group Home Commission. In July 2014, the board supervisors approved the consolidation of the Rapid Hand Area Office on the youth board and the Spotsylvania Staff for Freddie's Group Home Commission into one body, the Rapid Hand Area Youth Services and Group Home Commission. The commission recommended that Deputy Detonator Tyrone Tigs, the Stafford representative of the advisory committee, be appointed by the boards and council of the member jurisdiction to fill the positions of the seventh voting member on the commission for a one-year term to expire June 30th, 2016. A resolution for the appointments before the board. Appointment of Arthur Snyder to the Transportation Committee. This is for Supervisor Heidig would like to appoint Arthur Snyder to the Transportation Committee representing the Livingston District. Item six, appointment of Brian Moody to the Economic Development and Tourism Committee. Supervisor Sebula would like to appoint Brian Moody to the Economic Development and Tourism Committee representing the Berkeley District. Mr. Moody will fill that unexpired term that will end December 31st, 2017. Item seven, the Clerks Office Technology Trust Fund budget adjustment. The state mandates the clerk of each circuit court assess a fee known as technology trust fee, or TTF, for the purposes of developing and updating records and software, implementing automation plans, improving public access to records. In FY 2015, the budget assumed as $69,239 would be available for the compensation board for TTF purposes. However, a total of $129,807 is actually available. The clerk of the circuit court requests that the difference of $60,568 be budgeted to allow continued preservation of court records. Item eight, commendation for Al Harf of PRTC. Al Harf is retiring. He's the executive director of Potomac Rail and Transportation, Rapid Handic Transportation Commission. He has served there 16 years and commendation for the board is here for your consideration. Item nine is recommendation of Ellen Sears, who is Rapid Hand Area Community Services Board. The staff recommends appointment of Ellen for the term beginning July 2015 and expiring June 30th, 2018. Item 10, appointment of Darrell M. Caldwell to the Transportation Committee. Mr. Akabowski would like to appoint Darrell M. Caldwell to the Transportation Committee as an at-large representative. Ms. Caldwell will fill an unexpired term which will end May 12th, 2016. And that's all the items on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any items to be removed? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, next item is public presentations.
There are several citizens signed up to speak. The first citizen is Andrew Flouche, followed by Beth Granger.
Please come forward, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Andrew Flouche. I live at 1806 Sony Creek Drive in the Battlefield District. I run my own law firm and employ three other people in the Lee Hill District. You guys probably remember from a couple of weeks ago that I'm 100% against any stadium deal, especially one that involves taxpayer funding. I don't hate baseball, I don't hate Americans pastime, but I've been nothing but insulted, called names, and belittled since I came out publicly against this deal, if that tells you anything about what's going on here. For the sake of argument, let's look at the proposed lease that we have before us. I've been told this lease is garbage, that we're starting all over, which I frankly don't believe. That's not how deals work. You work on fine points of a deal at this point, but let's say, for the sake of argument, let's look at this lease. First of all, have you guys done due diligence on Hagerstown baseball? We're talking about entering a large, millions of dollars of a contract with this company. Have we gotten financials? Do we know if this company is actually going to be able to fulfill their end of the deal and pay us? Have we done that? I don't know if we have or not, but I haven't seen anything reported about that. Secondly, have you compared actual leases from other teams? All I've seen published is this one little handy-dandy little chart from the South Atlantic League saying what a great deal Spotsylvania is getting. Well, I took it upon myself, and I have two other leases from the South Atlantic League. I've got two other leases from other teams in Virginia which are not in the South Atlantic League, and I've compared them, and I'm going to bring you some results right now. First of all, these leases are really easy to get, and if you haven't gotten at least a dozen from the South Atlantic League, it's quite shameful, actually. It would take about an hour probably from somebody in the county admin's office to make some phone calls, and under open records, they're available. Mr. Krupa says that they're confidential, but any lease with a public body, as you all know, is public record, and you should have them so you can analyze them and do some comparisons. If we wanted to do this deal, let's make sure we get the best deal for the county. This deal is not a good deal at all. First of all, insurance. Both the other South Atlantic League leases, these are all very recent, 2005 and '99, both of them require that the team pays all liability insurance. That's a huge expense that our lease has on the county. Secondly, is security. The Lakewood lease from Lakewood, New Jersey requires that the team pays for security. The Fredericksburg BND report estimated security would be $265,000 annually, which is $6.6 million over 25 years. That's a lot of money that county could be saving us. One of the most important points of the lease we're going to jump to is that the Spotsylvania lease does not require anyone plays baseball in our stadium. You heard me right. All it says is that Quinn gets exclusive use of our stadium, save our six little events for free. It does not require a baseball team. It does not require a minor league team, it does not require an affiliated team, an independent team, it does not require baseball. The other South Atlantic League leases require baseball. They require the specific teams that are in question. So this brings you back to a point Quinn made in 2013 where he said, maybe we'll have baseball in Hagerstown and Fredericksburg. What team are we going to get? Are we going to get any team? Our lease doesn't specify. Thank you.
Beth Granger, followed by Nora Eldridge.
Beth Granger, I live at 6011 New Pembroke Lane in the Battlefield District. Okay, I'm not saying not to build. I'm just saying that if someone wants to build in our county, I kind of feel like we're in the prime location right now of construction, and they better come with cash in hand, with a good business plan. I drove up to Woodbridge to see a baseball game with my kids a number of years ago, and it was an evening, and we had to look directly into the sun the whole time, and it was a hideous experience, and I've never been back. It was poor planning, they just had to shift it. Maybe the players could have looked into the sun. You know, I didn't really enjoy the experience. So that project was bad planning, and it's just something that's simple, like the orientation of the stands that can go wrong to make it all bad. I have a lot of questions, and I think that's what I'm here with. Who gets to look into the sun? The fans or the players? Will it be free for Spotsylvania County residents since we're paying for it? Do we have to pay for parking, or is parking free because we've, you know, footed the bill kind of thing? Or, you know, to go see the games? Are the games free? Do I get tickets or coupons for certain games, or just do I get to pick? Or do they tell me which games I get to go to? Those are questions me and my kids want to know. Will there be concerts or other free events that we can go to to pick from? My kids really are into soccer, and so are all their friends. They don't really play baseball, so we're kind of hoping that maybe there's like a soccer field in with it. We want to see some soccer, that's what we enjoy doing. Does the county already have the $30 million? Or do we have to raise the $30 million? Are we just trying to figure out what to spend $30 million on? And I know that you're not going to like raise my taxes for this, so then if you don't already have the $30 million, where's it going to come from? I know most of my taxes go to education or transporting kids to get educated, so are we going to count, cut the salaries of teachers, or reduce transportation for the schools, or god forbid, the lunch programs that kids like really rely on? Or, and maybe this is a public works project, you know, maybe we're going to put turbines up on there and solar panels, and maybe it has like a geothermal feedback for our county to reduce our carbon footprint. There's a lot of questions I have about the environmental impact of this. Will there be a lot of trash that's generated? Who pays to get rid of the trash? Where is it going to go? Is it in my trash dump? What about water? Is their usage of a lot of water going to impact how the cost of my house, water at my house, is that going to raise my price because of the impact of this? And then are they going to be forced to use county food? So like maybe food services from our county, or are they just going to ship it in from wherever, Pennsylvania or something? So, you know, is it going to be a Spotsylvania hot dog? I don't know. And I'm just, you know, one point here is at the time that citizens are beginning to demand more from their tax dollars, I think it's irresponsible to be spending tax dollars on entertainment. If you argue that it's not, that it's recreation and not entertainment, I think that I would prefer that you built a sports park for our citizens to actually play sports and do sports rather than watch sports.
Ma'am, your time is up. If you could sum up, please.
Okay. I guess I just feel like, I just think that you're acting more like, you know, it's like a business or something where you're using money versus like the taxpayer situation. I know you're not even looking at me, but I have a lot of questions that aren't answered about this project, and I really would like to have some entertainment to go to with my family in this county, enjoy it. I've been here for 15 years, I really like the county, but it seems like we're going to have to pay for it, and I feel like we shouldn't have to pay for the thing.
Nora Eldridge, followed by Regina Heine.
My name is Nora Eldridge. I live at 10,003 Morgate Avenue, apartment 304. I'm in the Battlefield District. Mr. Akabowski is my supervisor. I love baseball, I really do, but this is a bad deal for Spotsylvania. The Constitution is very clear that the limited role of government, one of the facets of that is that they build the roads. And yes, you do use taxpayer money, because one argument that I'm hearing from people who want the stadium is that, well, you know, you pay taxes and they build the roads, so why is this different? They're supposed to build the roads. Government is supposed to build the roads, maintain a standing army, and provide for the public good. They are not supposed to be funding private enterprise with public money, and that is my big objection to this. Bruce Quinn is going to donate $8 million, which is not an inconsiderable sum of money. He can donate some to me if he likes, but that is, you know, a very generous offer on his part, but point being, that's a one-time donation. Spotsylvania will be on the hook for everything else for the entire time that that stadium is there, and even if it stands empty, if he decides to move the team someplace else or whatever happens in minor league baseball, we're still the ones who are going to be paying for it, and that's just wrong. If this is such a great deal, if this is something that's going to enhance your life in Spotsylvania County, why hasn't silver companies jumped on it? Why haven't other developers jumped on it and contributed private funds to build it? That seems to be the way to go. So I really hope that all of you on the board rethink this and turn the deal down in its entirety, and we can just all go up to Nationals Park or Camden Yards and watch baseball or stay home in the air conditioning, you know, one or the other. Thank you.
Regina Heine.
My name is Regina Heine, and I thank you for your service, and I'm not here to be a killjoy, and I'm also against the ballpark. I live at 7209 Ny River Landing, and I'm in the chancellor section of the county. I have six kids in the public schools, two in Riverbend, two at Freedom, and two at Smith Station, and I spend a good amount of time driving throughout the county, including my daughter who's at the Renaissance Fair, working there. So I have probably a considerable amount of time driving our county roads. Probably my biggest concern is that you are using information from companies that are choosing to sell you a bill of goods, and their job is to sell you guys a bill of goods. You're using companies and you're using people that want you to buy them or to build them a stadium, and it's for $33 million. You could go a lot cheaper, you're choosing not to. Think about that. And they're giving, they're controlling this sale. They're telling you, we need you to make this sale. They gave you till May 31st. They're telling you that you have until May, and I know they've changed it. Isn't that great of them? They're telling you that you have until May 31st to give them until whatever date is, whatever they extend the date to you. Who does that? Who does that? You can have until May 31st to give us $23 million. Oh yay, may I? Please, okay? First of all, you guys need to be the adults and say, we'll control our money, thank you. You guys need to be good stewards of our money. That's why we elected you. That's why we elected you. And honestly, we elected you. We have confidence in you, and we know that you guys have good intentions. We know that. We know that, okay? We're not here to be contrary, okay? We know that, but be good stewards. They're going to sell you a bill of goods regarding the attendance, the attendance, and they're going to say, we had record attendance, but here's what I found. On April 22nd, in the Fort Wayne Park, and Fort Wayne, by the way, is controlled by Mr. Bruce Quinn's company, Stadium One. Bruce Quinn, yes, he owns the Suns, but he has a company. It's a software company that is streamlining fan experience, and their job is to raise profits for stadiums. Look it up. It's called Stadium One, and it's Bruce Quinn's job. And they said they had a record opening of 6,619 people, and it's a record opening. But of those 6,619 people, only 4,248 of them were actually, oh no, I'm sorry, 4,248 were complimentary tickets. They got their tickets through use and promotions to drive up numbers. They were youth groups and radio productions and church groups. So of that 6,000, only 2,000, whatever, were actually paid people. Keep that in mind.
Ma'am, your time is up. If you could sum up, please.
The people you used were trying to sell you a bill of goods. Please be good stewards. Thank you.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak.
Anybody else here who has not spoken wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Mary Lou Callier, Mr. Skinner's district. I'd like to get an update, and I know the citizens do too, as to the website, is it up and running? How long is it going to be operational for citizen input? Also, how are we going to know about forthcoming open meetings regarding discussions? I know you'll have several closed-door meetings, but when will the public know the current information, especially if there's renegotiation of the lease terms? I also ask that you utilize the Comcast TV station to post information as well, for those that don't have computers, or those that don't use a newspaper, that they can still have use of the TV to get information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing nobody rise, we'll move along with the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, next item on the agenda is public hearing. This is SUP 15-002 Dominion Virginia Power Communication Tower.
Can you turn on your microphone, please? Hit the button. There you go.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Patrick White, planner, Spotsylvania County. My credentials may be obtained from the county clerk's office. The case before you is SUP 1502. It is a special use for a communication tower. Just prior to the meeting, we discovered that there is a condition, condition number two, that is going to require some tweaking. We believe it would be best to do that outside of the public hearing, but in order to keep with the advertising, believe that we should nonetheless complete the presentations so that the public hearing may be held. Two, the application is, as I said, for a communication tower. It's a little unusual from other communication towers, we'll get to that momentarily. It's in the chancellor voting district. The proposed tower is a lattice tower. It's proposed to be 199 feet tall. It is 195 with a four-foot lightning rod. It's located, or proposed to be located, at an existing electrical substation known as the Chancellor Substation. It's next to the Salem Fields Community Church on a 13.62 acre property which is, completely contains the substation. Here's an aerial of the substation. You'll note Gordon Road over here on the right-hand side of the screen. The substation itself is highlighted in this blue outline, and the Salem Field Church is where my mouse is kind of hovering. The property, as well as all immediately surrounding properties, is zoned rural and has a future land use designation of institutional. The proposed tower is identified on the GDP before you with a little orange dot. It is, as I mentioned before, completely within the substation. As you recall, recently, you received a special use application for the substation to expand its footprint, and there was also recently a variance to allow the 20-foot high-security walls. It's this access control that's caused the issue with one of our standardized conditions that goes on communication towers. The applicants have proposed the lattice tower depicted on the left. It's not a standard cell phone tower, although it can hold additional cellular equipment. Its main purpose is to relay communication between two different facilities, the Fredericksburg Main Office and the Lady Smith Substation. It has been engineered to have a zero-fall zone. By that, it doubles over before, it doesn't tip over, it folds over. Briefly, we'll go through a few photo simulations. See the tower depicted by the red arrow viewing north from Ny River Landing at approximately .26 miles away. From further west down Ny River Landing, looking to the northeast, again, just barely visible at about half-mile away. From Gordon Road, looking over the church to the west, from about .4 miles away. And looking across an open expanse of field from three-quarters of a mile away to the The applicants have provided the necessary documentation, including radio frequency emissions information, and FAA determination of no air hazard, the state historic preservations officer, their opinion that no adverse impact directly or visually is expected on any historic properties. Our staff consultant, Atlantic Technology Consulting, has recommended approval. The environmental review conducted by the applicant's consultant, Burns &amp; McDonald's, concluded that no impact are expected. The cable television, excuse me, Cable TV and Telecommunication Commission recommended approval. The Planning Commission recommended approval. Staff found that the proposal will strengthen the county's infrastructure, electrical infrastructure. It's consistent with the comp plan, it meets the standards of review, and is recommending approval with four conditions. They are within your packet, I won't read them all aloud, but I will note that it's condition two that we're working on fine-tuning. I believe the applicant has a presentation of their own. If you would like to proceed immediately to that, that's fine, otherwise I will stand by for your questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Yes, ma'am.
Did I understand, is this, is this tower going to be basically a repeater type of station as opposed to, you know, broadcast or?
As I, I will, I will ask my, the applicants to correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand, it is a redundant communication system, which is, the purpose of which is to strengthen the electrical infrastructure locally by, basically, it relays if anything's going wrong at the substation and communicates between another facility and the main office. So I guess in some aspect...
It's not taking a signal, amplifying it, and sending it back out like a repeater? Okay.
Going to have to bring them up to answer that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The applicant would like to come up? You have 10 minutes.
Yes, the telecommunications tower communicates directly with the Lady Smith Substation and a communication center. So I'm not exactly, I'm not an engineer, and I don't understand the, what you're asking precisely, but no, it's not, it's not a standard. It's not going to help with the cell phone reception or anything.
We typically have a clicker. Did you want to do a presentation?
Yes, that's right, I can go ahead and begin.
Yes.
Our clicker, so just cough, and I'll advance the slide myself.
Oh, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Shelley Campbell. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client, Dominion Virginia Power. With me here this evening is Mr. James Beasley and Mrs. Nadia Eunice of Dominion. Next slide, please. In March of 2014, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission issued a mandate directing utilities to address physical security risks and vulnerabilities. Dominion has taken several steps to address security at the Chancellor Substation. Spotsylvania County has already approved several measures within Dominion's overall plan for the Chancellor Substation, including a variance to allow for a 20-foot fence and a special, a special exception to allow for the expansion of the substation. We're here before you tonight to request approval of the final piece of the security enhancement puzzle, and this is the communications tower. The communications tower is used for redundant security measures, communication being a central tenant of security. Next slide, please. As stated before, the tower will be 195 feet in height with a four-foot lightning rod on top. Currently, there are no objections from any adjoining property owners, and we have received unanimous approval before the subcommittee, the communications and cable TV committee, and before the planning commission. My next two slides, I believe, are both the visual simulations, or two of the visual simulations which you've already seen, so I don't know that we need to go through them again. And that concludes my prepared remarks, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Sebula.
Yes, does the perimeter security include electronic devices?
The secure fence does have certain technologies involved in it.
That's, that's all, that answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Open the public hearing. Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
Is anybody here who would like to speak? Seeing nobody rise, declare the public hearing closed. Applicant has rebuttal time. Is there, yes, sir?
Yeah, one quick question. Now, condition two, is that allowing us to put communication, emergency communication on the tower? That's the one, sir. Okay. Are we going to put other AT&amp;T, Verizon on this tower in the future? Well, we, I don't think the county... Not we, are they? There is room on the site, it can have other equipment co-located upon it. The reason that I believe, that it's less likely is because of the security fence. So anytime someone would need to come and maintain their equipment, for, including us, there would be some access and security concerns. Maybe they'd have to be escorted, and that would make it more expensive. So the intent is not to put additional capability up there? But we don't need this site, do we? My understanding before, because we have, Station 10 has a tower, doesn't it?
No, we're, we're okay, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? If not, is there a motion?
I, I believe that they've asked us, Chair, so I'll make a motion to table this.
Thirty days?
To the next meeting. Okay, we'll table it to the June 9th meeting.
June 9th?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Motion to table until June 9th.
Seven yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next item on the agenda is presentations, and I invite Chief Williford up. We have recognition, recognition of Spotsylvania County Fire and Rescue Volunteers. After the board votes on the resolution, we will have a photo op. Since we have several volunteers, we'll be recognizing, my suggestion is we'll invite them into the well, and the board can just stand up in a group behind, it'd be a little bit easier. Thank you.
Tonight, when I call the individual volunteer leadership, if y'all would come up and stand with me at the podium until we finish, and then we'll bring everyone else up for the photo. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm here tonight to recognize the outstanding accomplishments of the men and women of our fire and rescue system. As you know, in Spotsylvania County, we utilize a combination system of both career and volunteer personnel. Many jurisdictions can tout of having a combination system, but few can actually look back and reflect on the success of our system. Our success is a direct reflection of the men and women who have dedicated themselves to serve our citizens. I have appeared numerous times over the last several months, recognizing a number of accomplishments of our career employees. Tonight, I'm here specifically to recognize our volunteer members. Before reading the prepared resolution, I would like to first take several minutes to make a few comments. Our FREM volunteers represent the Spotsylvania Volunteer Fire Department, led by Chief Norman Brooks and President Mark Keckler. Tonight, representing Chief Brooks is Jason Carter, Chief Jason Carter, and Vice President Eric McDonald. Chancellor Volunteer Fire and Rescue, led by Chief J.R. Richter and President Beth Addington, and Spotsylvania Volunteer Rescue Squad, led by Chief Kim Madison and President Carolyn Marsh. And tonight, we have instead of President Marsh, Vice President Bob Morrison. These volunteer agencies provide approximately 350 trained emergency responders to our system who fill the roles of firefighter, company officer, instructor, ambulance driver, fire apparatus driver operator, EMT basic, EMT enhanced, EMT intermediate, paramedic, and chief officer. Our volunteers are not a reserve force, and I repeat, they are not a reserve force, but instead provide primary fire and rescue coverage at designated fire and rescue stations around the county on nights and weekends. Additionally, they also provide an additional force multiplier of providing personnel on major incidents during daytime hours, as was provided yesterday at a large mulch fire. Specifically, Spotsylvania Volunteer Fire provides fire staffing at the Courthouse, Four Mile Fork, and Thornburg stations. Spotsylvania Volunteer Rescue provides EMS coverage from the Courthouse, Brokenburg, Four Mile Fork, and Thornburg stations. Chancellor Volunteer Fire and Rescue provides both fire and EMS coverage from Five Mile Fork and also assists with coverage at Fire Rescue Station 10, working alongside career personnel. Whether responding to a fire on the Route 3 corridor, an auto accident at the 118 mile marker, providing an honor guard, public education activities, or responding to any one of the thousands of EMS calls responded to annually, our volunteers answer the call to help citizens when needed. Tonight, I am recognizing the contribution of all of our fire and rescue volunteers affiliated with these three agencies. However, I'm specifically recognizing by name those individuals with over 2,000 hours. This number was selected because 2,080 hours is symbolic of a full-time county employee, and 2,912 hours is symbolic of a full-time 24-hour career firefighter. Again, these individuals tonight are recon, being recognized tonight are only symbolic of the entire 350 who dedicate their time and energy to train, become certified, and serve our citizens by providing fire suppression, emergency medical treatment and transportation, public education, and response to all hazard incidents. In closing, I would like to reflect on one recent EMS call. Recently, units responded to a call for an individual having seizures. Upon arrival, CPR was being performed, and after assessing the cardiac rhythm, the patient was found to be in ventricular fibrillation. CPR was continued, and ALS care, including cardiac conversion, drug therapy, and airway insertion was provided. CPR was transferred over to the new Lucas II compression device, which was quickly shown here several meetings ago. The patient, found clinically dead, arrived at the hospital with a return of spontaneous circulation, and that's, of course, having a pulse in layman's terms. That same patient was discharged from the hospital some two weeks later. This is only one example of many successful incidents. Specifically, on this call, was exclusively volunteers, with the exception of the EMS supervisor, Lieutenant Grubb. And those volunteers were Sue Ann Blinko, Jennifer Love, David Hipkins, Brandy Evans, Drew Brooks, Jacob Stout, Eric McDonald, Bill Tausick, Brittany Mansfield, which completes that call. And again, that individual basically owes his life to these individuals. Next, I'm going to announce those individuals with over 2,000 hours, 2,500 hours, 3,000 hours, and 3,500 hours. And if they would come up and stand behind the leadership, please. 2,000 hours, Chance Bland, Mike Huffman, Eric McDonald, Jacob Stout, Corey McGee, Evan Blackburn, Matt Long, Austin Scott, James Fitzgerald Jr. 2,500 hours, Drew Brooks, Robert Garland, Michael Hall, Daniel Hunter, Tyler Ford, Kevin Howard. 3,000 hours, David Hipkins Jr., Jason Carter, Jonathan Baggett, Norman Brooks Sr., Ronnie McGee. 3,500 hours, Kevin Lewis, Chris Dodd, James Hood, and Corey Williams. And that's quite an accomplishment. But again, it needs to be stated that even though these individuals, or these few individuals, had a much larger number of hours, that does not take away from the hundreds and thousands of hours that all of our volunteers cumulatively have provided in both training and service to the citizens of Spotsylvania County. And with that, I'll read the resolution. Resolution in recognizing, correction, rec, resolution in recognition of Spotsylvania County Fire and Rescue Volunteers. Whereas Spotsylvania County provides fire and rescue service to its citizens through a combination system, and whereas the combination system is comprised of career county employees, members of the Spotsylvania Volunteer Fire Department, Chancellor Volunteer Fire and Rescue, and Spotsylvania Volunteer Rescue Squad, and whereas the volunteer members of the Spotsylvania Volunteer Fire Department, Chancellor Volunteer Fire and Rescue, and Spotsylvania Volunteer Rescue Squad provide nighttime and weekend coverage at four fire stations and six EMS stations, and whereas these members dedicate their time toward improving their training and certifications, staffing, community events, and providing primary station staffing and emergency response, and whereas volunteer fire and rescue members provide a minimum, and again, this is a minimum, of, of, of their basic response, 118,074 hours annually, and whereas this contribution is realized through the personal sacrifice and dedication of county volunteer emergency responders. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Spotsylvania County, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes Spotsylvania County Fire and Rescue Volunteers for their time, dedication, and exceptional service, all which significantly contribute to the success of the Spotsylvania County's fire and rescue system and increases the safety of the citizens of Spotsylvania County.
And we could have a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to approve. Motion. Discussion? One more needs to vote, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I rise with the happy task of interrupting your agenda with another matter of service recognition. I am Mark Taylor, your incoming county administrator, and I rise to call back our fire chief, Monty Williford, for a resolution recognizing the service of my predecessor, Doug Barnes. When I first came to Spotsylvania County in 1996, 19 years ago, Doug Barnes welcomed me here, encouraged me, and mentored me on my way as deputy county attorney, and then county attorney. I am honored and blessed to call Doug my friend. And it has been a very happy thing that for the last several weeks, he has welcomed me back to Spotsylvania again, and reoriented me to my new era of service as your county We all wish Doug very, very well, and have this resolution for you to please consider and adopt in recognition of his service to Spotsylvania County. Monty?
I usually nod on that end. getting involved with, or what direction that the job was going to take me, and about two days went by, and I still really didn't know. And then day three came, and I was brought over to a meeting at Mr. Barnes' office, and he gave me basically my marching orders. And he wanted to be able to provide the citizens of Spotsylvania with the best fire and rescue coverage that they could receive. We had a lot of gaps at the time. We had groups kind of playing in different sandboxes, and thought we could, could do a lot better job with all of the excellent men and women that we had. And we've been working there for about five years on that. And again, based on what I just read, I think you can see, see where we're going and the vision that Mr. Barnes had with that. So with that, I would like to present this plaque. It's actually not a resolution, but it's a plaque. Presented to C. Douglas Barnes, County Administrator, October 2009 to May 2015, in recognition of your outstanding leadership, dedication, and ongoing personal commitment to provide the best possible fire and rescue service to the citizens and visitors of Spotsylvania County, presented by the Spotsylvania County Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Management. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the sheriff is also here and would like to say a word.
Members of the board, thank you for letting me speak for a moment. I would be very remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Barnes for all he's done for our county government, your leadership, Mr. Barnes, through the many years. When I came to work for Spotsylvania County in the 80s, I kept hearing the name Doug Barnes. The man was a legend then, and he's still a legend, in my mind, anyway. But since I have been the sheriff of Spotsylvania County, Doug, I have really come to appreciate your leadership of the county, what you do for this county, what you've done for it. You're going to be greatly missed. I'm sure there were lots of days that Doug came in and told his staff, if the sheriff calls, I'm out today. But in working with you, Doug, we have done some great things through the Sheriff's Department and public safety. We have implemented the unity in the community program that you were very instrumental. I spoke with you before I actually took office on my plan for community policing. You have helped me tremendously with that. And I could stand here and talk for days, but all the programs we've started for the youth in Spotsylvania County, for our elderly citizens, and since I am one, I really appreciate that, Doug. But I thank you for your service, I thank you for your friendship, thank you for everything you've done to lead our county, our Sheriff's Department, our public safety, and the right direction. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, he didn't take office till June 1st.
And, and I promise after June 1st, Mr. Chairman, we won't tolerate interruptions to your adopted agenda at public meetings, but I would, if the board will indulge a bit further, like to read this resolution, please, for your consideration. Resolution recognizing County Administrator C. Douglas Barnes. Whereas C. Douglas, Doug Barnes, is retiring as of May 31st, 2015, as county administrator of Spotsylvania County Government. And whereas Doug Barnes has dedicated his noteworthy career of public service to the citizens of Spotsylvania County, initially hired to be landfill supervisor in May of 1977. And whereas Doug Barnes has, by virtue of his exemplary leadership and effective management, been promoted to serve as Director of Solid Waste Management from 1986 to 1992, Director of Public Works from 1992 to 1998, Director of General Services from 1999... it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Spotsylvania County, Virginia, that the Board recognizes and congratulates retiring county administrator Doug Barnes for thirty-eight years of distinguished public service, wishing him well in his retirement and expressing appreciation for his service with a thank you from the Board, county staff, and Spotsylvania County citizens.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve?
Seven yes.
Thank you.
Totally, totally caught off guard. Ecclesiastes three says that to everything there is a season, and it's a season for me to leave, and it's a season for some new people to come in here, and it's a good season. It's not a bad season at all. So I'm looking forward to my new season. I would encourage the Board and the citizens of this county to look forward to the new season that's before them. I will tell you that when I started in nineteen seventy-seven, I did have hair. And the job did not make me lucid. It was some genetics. I want to leave, I want to encourage the Board, and first of all, my faith is what's allowed me to work here thirty-eight years, nothing short of that. And one of the scriptures I love so much is found in Proverbs twenty-one, where it says, "The heart of the king is in the hand of the Lord, and he turns it as the rivers, whichever way he wants." And so I look at each of you in authority, and I remind you that he's in charge, and he will take your hearts, and he will turn it the way it needs to be done that's in the best interest of the citizens of this county. And I appreciate that. And the other scripture that I enjoy is that the steps of a good man are ordered. And my steps have been ordered all these years, and it's been a blessing to be here. It has been a privilege, an absolute utter privilege, to serve the citizens of this county. If, I think you have to have a servant's heart, but there's times when I really feel that it's a situation when I look around, regardless of the politics, regardless of the agendas, regardless of everything that goes on, this is a blessed county to live in. And I think it's because we've had God's favor upon us so many years, and I know he's been on me and my staff. I have got blessed to serve with some of the finest people. And I've served with a few that had not quite that bad. We don't want to talk about them. But in spite of it, I'm just blessed. I thank everybody here. I thank you for this tribute. I thank you for the resolution and the plaques. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm still here for a while, and I plan on still being. I don't think I'll be at the podium that much talking to you guys, but you never know what might happen. But thank you, each of you, so much. I thank the citizens more than you'll ever know, because that's one thing I've enjoyed. I don't care if you were the richest man or the poorest person in the county. It was my privilege to work and to serve the citizens of this county and work along with such a great staff. So thank you very much. God bless Spotsylvania, and may the Lord keep you, all of you guys. And thank you.
Mr. Barnes, next time you do go up there, please state your name, address. And you'll have three minutes.
I will do that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, I'd like to say thank you for everything you've done for me. You've treated me wonderful. You've been a great friend, and you brought Christ back into my life. So I thank you for that very much. It's probably the most important thing you've done for me. And in hard times, and you've got me through them, and I appreciate that very much. It's going to be very hard, Mark, to fill shoes like that, but I've got complete confidence in you, Mark, that you can. I really do. And I know Doug has the same confidence in you also. We don't know what we lose until we've lost them. And I think we're going to find that we will miss Doug, but since Doug is in this, living close by, that I certainly won't hesitate to call him. He's been good guidance for me throughout my tenure as a supervisor. So Doug, may God bless you and your family. And I know you're looking forward to all the grandchildren, to spend time with them. And I think that's what we look forward to in our lives, getting to a point where now, since you've given so much and taken so much away from your family with this job, now it's your turn to give back to your family and be with them. And may God bless you, dear friend.
Mr. Sebula?
Yeah, Doug, there's not much more than I can say is thank you for being a friend.
Mr. Chairman, next item on the agenda is presentation by others.
There'll be LED signs. We have Mr. Tigler, our zoning director, to lead us in a discussion on moving forward with some changes, possible changes in sign ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes, chairman, members of the board. With me tonight is Pat Baez, former zoning code enforcement officer of the year for the state of Virginia. Pat is going to assist me in a video presentation tonight on LED signs. LED signs are a new technology. Sometimes I think technology gets ahead of the old zoning administrator sometimes, maybe even one of the best code enforcement officers in the entire state of Virginia, too. But we do our best. We respond to complaints as we receive them. We try to fairly and equitably enforce the law as is written by the Board of Supervisors and also by the Commonwealth. The point tonight on LED signs, they're a little subset of the overall sign ordinance. LED signs are fashionable because they're basically a high-pixel television screen. You can pretty much show anything that you want to digitally through computer animation. And up on the screen now is our current ordinance, which says quite clearly, and this is also in concert with the state law on LED signs and motion in signs, is that motion in signs is not allowed, the first bullet. Then the code goes into allowing certain exceptions to that sort of salient statement. So does the state code. State code's pretty much designed the same way. It says you cannot have signs to distract the driving public that are visible from the highways of the Commonwealth. The second section, though, does say that if you have a static image on an LED sign, that you can change that image every four seconds. We're going to go over a little bit of the chronology on LED signs that the Board has adopted in the last couple of years. It's a new technology. It's getting more favorable, and as more and more folks come out, we find more little idiosyncrasies about LED signs. I do apologize, the state code reference is an error on this slide. It's actually Section thirty-three point two, one-two-one-six, should you want to search a reference on that. This section was, this section code number was changed. Can you go back, please?
Sure.
But basically, this language is exactly the same in the code of Virginia, which I just read recently right here. And basically, it says that this is the only proviso that allows for messages to move at all, and that's what allows the message to move every four seconds. Next slide. The county currently has a study process going on. It's been to the Planning Commission for discussion on electronic and digital displays. It actually strengthens the language that deals with the intervals between messages. This code section, which is different from the first section, included the word intervals. You can put the static sign up, and the letters and images can move within the four or ten seconds or whatever it's displayed. But there's also movement when it moves from one message, A, to message, B. Sometimes there are pinwheels, sometimes there are sparkles, sometimes there are bubbles coming in and out. All that motion in an LED sign is not allowed under the state code and also our local code as enforced. We do get complaints about that motion in LED signs, and then we go and we talk to the individuals, and try to educate them. Most people, LED sign is new to them. They've never, it's probably, in most cases, a first-time purchase, and they are more expensive than some conventional signs that businesses could put up. The second part of the overall comprehensive review deals with nighttime brightness levels of LED signs. LED signs, sometimes when you go by them at night, if you look out in too long, you can see the image in your eyes. It's just really very, very bright beyond what it should be, with no background light, and those are also distracting. So the county planning commission has recommended some amendments, and this would be an additional amendment that will be coming soon to the Board's consideration. It's moving so fast with these code amendments, the equation actually has been deleted from the draft since this was written. The planning commission, I think, met just a few days ago on this very same issue. As with the technology, the progression of codes has been chronologically changing. LED signs used to only have date, time, and temperature. That was very common to see it at banks. And that was from a long time ago. But I think with modern technology and digital imagery and computer animation, the Board saw a need to change that date, time, and temperature to also allow business information copy. So if you wanted to advertise, if you were CVS and you wanted to advertise a special or a weekly special or something like that, you could put an image on your screen. I have seen actually the word Tide written out on the CVS. I don't know why Tide is sold at CVS or it's that popular, but I've seen that. But you could only have one color. And most businesses and most sign companies will tell you, red is the color of choice. If you're going to have a sign, you want to have a red sign. It attracts more attention. It attracts the human eye faster than other colors. So most businesses put up red signs. Arby's still has their red signs. The mall has a red LED sign. I thought it was an interesting conversation when the town center came in and they wanted to advertise socks and shoes. I told the young lady that worked for a car rental company that'd be fine, but she can only put up red shoes. She said they wanted to advertise the actual picture of the shoe. So the Board made a consideration and changed that. We went from one color to no restriction on color. The Spotsylvania Regional Hospital now has a sign out front. It's very effective for their wait times. They adhere to a four-second change of message, and that sign looks just like a giant television screen. It mounts very similarly to a television screen. It's easy to install and easy to take down, and it's totally programmable. They could have that sign do spinning pinwheels, waves, any type of motion that a computer can generate. It can do a sign wave if it wanted to. Then we talked about the amount of seconds and intervals and changes. Local businesses on Route Three particularly wanted to have the ability to put up more messages, so they asked for the county standard of ten seconds to be reduced to four seconds. The Board of Supervisors made that change and adopted a four-second standard, which is the fastest motion change that you can have under the state law, four seconds. So you're at that maximum right now with a four-second message copy change. The little idiosyncrasy of the actual messages changing is less than probably a second. But when you see a pinwheel go around or you see exploding sparkles come through the sign, those are some of the images that some of the retailers have said, what does that hurt? I don't know. A sign is kind of a subjective thing. I mean, one person's sign looks great, another person looks at a sign, they see it look garish. But from the county standpoint, there is a wholesale change coming through, and the LED signs are a subset of that, of those overall sign ordinance changes that have gone to the Planning Commission. And it does include a little further restriction on the motion component of LED signs, where the word is added in the language that would cover that split second of motion copy interval or, as it's termed, I think, the transition from one message to the next. So the Board is now at options to either decide to continue through the wholesale process and let the Planning Commission bring the whole ordinance of signage back to you, or the Board could choose to pull out the subset of LED sections with a separate advertisement and deal with that separately. Or, and the options are really to continue with some further modifications and restrictions to consider, or to consider the business input for lesser restrictions. Please, this is just the way it is. It could be read kind of unpatriotic, but you cannot fly the American flag electronically in LED sign, according to the state of Virginia. And we've legally researched that. The patriotic thing about the zoning ordinance is, is that if you own piece property, you can put up a standard flagpole, twenty-five feet tall, with a four-by-six flag, as long as you keep it fifteen feet back from the right-of-way. And every single business in Spotsylvania County can display one of those flags tomorrow if they chose to do so. And it flaps in the wind, fifteen feet from the right-of-way, and it could be sitting right beside an LED sign. That would be okay. But if you've never seen one, they can make the flag really look like it's in the wind, and then the image, whatever they're advertising, is on the actual flag. And we have some businesses that would like to promote their patriotism and promote their message at the same time. But as currently written, the law doesn't provide for that. The county state law, even in further research, is supreme over our local zoning laws prohibiting animation and motion in signs. It's just a salient decision by our best research into the state code and our local code. So we're left with businesses say the signs mean increased revenues and are essential to their success. The cons of having these types of signs up is that citizen complaints are concerned about the appearance and sometimes the tacky image of a sign proliferation. I think in the next few slides, you're going to see LED signs as technology, just like cell phones. Remember a flip phone? They don't exist anymore. No, maybe. You got the last one. What's up in the future? Other businesses that are coming to town are going to want LED signs, and they're going to ask for those signs as illustrated here. We do have a distinct as you keep it fifteen feet back from the right-of-way, and every single business in Spotsylvania County can display one of those flags tomorrow if they chose to do so. And it flaps in the wind fifteen feet from the right-of-way, and it could be sitting right beside an LED sign. That would be okay. But if you've never seen one, they can make the flag really look like it's in the wind, and then the image, whatever they're advertising, is on the actual flag. And we have some businesses that would like to promote their patriotism and, and promote their message at the same time, but it's currently written, the law doesn't provide for that. The county's state law, even in further research, is supreme over our local zoning laws prohibiting animation and motion in signs. That's just a salient deci- decision by, um, by our, um, best, uh, research into the state code and our local code. So we're left with businesses say the signs mean increased revenues and are essential to their success. The cons of having these types of signs up is that citizen complaints are concerned about the appearance and sometimes the tacky image of a sign proliferation. I think in the next few slides, you're gonna see LED signs as technology, just like cellphones. Um, remember a flip phone? They don't exist anymore. No, maybe. You got the last one. What's up in the future? Other businesses that are coming to town are gonna want LED signs, um, and they're gonna ask for those signs as, as illustrated here. We do have a distinction in the county of having some of the tallest signs on the entire East Coast. At Thornburg Exit one-eighteen, we have a McDonald's sign. It's a hundred-and-seventy-five feet tower to the top. I would really hate to be the guy who changes the light bulb on that sign. There's not enough money. Mastponics one-twenty-six, McDonald's sign's over a hundred-and-fifty feet tall. We also have Carcass Barrow, and we have, uh, Kentucky Fried Chicken. They're right up there with them. That was at a time, talk about sign ordinance evolution. You could put a sign up on your property as tall as you wanted to. You could engineer it in the eighties. If you could engineer it a thousand feet tall, you could put it up a thousand feet tall. I do believe there's a sign in Las Vegas that's nine-hundred feet tall, uh, so we don't have the world record. A hundred-and-seventy-five feet's pretty tall. Uh, but as we see in the bottom of this slide, the town center, they want LED now. Arby's, fast food restaurants that want LED, Spotsylvania Regional Medical LED, Liberty Pond, Pond King LED, the former U. Crops on Route Three LED, Powell's Furniture, Trivets Furniture. Furniture companies really, really have a lot of sales, so the LED signs really, really help them out. So I just mentioned some of those very successful businesses in the county that use LED. Might be a first if we can get it up. So you saw movement in the sign message. Different messages came in. They're moving a little bit faster than four seconds. Why we chose this video. And you're gonna see motion coming in the sign. There you see a movement and bubbles coming into the sign. All that motion in that sign's not allowed under the Code of Virginia or our local zoning ordinance. And here, uh, here we just moved into sort of what we just talked about, the, the giant sign of McDonald's, one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet tall. That's a non-performing sign that'll never leave the face of Spotsylvania County. McDonald's leaves, that sign will still be there, I guarantee you. Somebody put their sign on top of that sign and continue to maintain that non-performing sign. I believe that tower is valued at over a hundred thousand dollars in assessed value. The kinda ugly side of a tower sign is this sign. This is the old Burger King sign. Burger King's gone, so is the sign, but you're left with the Hulk. That will be there until something else changes on that, um, on that property and a new business moves in and puts their panel there. And just for sort of comparison's sake, Texas loves, loves color. I kinda put this one in for Brian Scott, that he would know that's Dallas, Texas. And then the ultimate sign, Times Square, probably a ninety-foot-tall Coca-Cola sign. I don't know what that really tells you, other than Coke's a big company and they can afford a million-dollar sign. Thank you. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, is the, uh, is the state working on anything to address the new signs or?
Not aware of anything, sir. The repealed section that is in the Code of Virginia right here, um, I think it has its origins even back decades about distracting drivers, um, and, um, it was sort of a nationwide thing that went through under the, um, under the Johnson administration way back, way back in the day. There are thirteen, there are thirteen separate sections in this section. We just talked about the one that would affect LED signs.
So has there been any updates to the distracted driver with signs since, I'd say since the Johnson administration, but?
Only, only to repeal the numbers, as far as I know. The, the language we looked at that is, was on the screen is the exact same language that's in the repealed section with the new number, when they recodified some of the numbers in, um, in, in the ordinance. I know of nothing out there that's, that's in movement to amend that, but I think you're on the right track. Uh, it would take a general assembly action to change or put some caveat in that language that would, um, provide some more flexibility for LED signs.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Troy, let me ask you this. If this board was to at least go to the assembly or put a resolution to the assembly asking for these changes, would that give us the right to at least keep what we've got right now, uh, since it would be in a process of trying to get it changed so that our owners of these expensive signs could use them until we got a confirmation from the assembly that, no, they're not gonna change it?
Well, to my knowledge, the only way to stay in a zoning enforcement action, if we have a complaint on a specific sign, and the zoning office or administrator or Ms. Baez or myself issue a notice of violation, the only way to stay that action is to appeal that notice to the Board of Zoning Appeals. You can have a hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals, that takes ninety days. If you don't like the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals, which has the right to rule on all notices, then you can appeal that decision to the circuit court, and that could take a considerable amount of time to get on a docket. I'm not sure how long that would be, but that's the administrative process. There's, there's no way in light of our recent research here to continually, um, do that. We do have up to one year to enforce on the, on their notice of violation. If the board wanted to take some sort of proactive action, um, it would have to get in a legislative hyper in September, so we could extend a notice out, I think, for up to a year with some discretion. If, but then again, you know, we're dealing with a sign that's a state code-driven matter, and, um, I'm not so sure it's as easy as just a zoning ordinance provision. This is actually very clear in the state code. So I'd, I'd have to consult with attorneys, but long story short, of those options, I think option one is the legal option. Somebody with a notice of violation can appeal that notice and it stays the zoning office's action. Um, other actions, I think I have less discretion. I think county attorney would tell me I have less discretion. He's nodding up and down, not sideways, so I gotta go with that.
And, and it costs nothing to appeal it to the zone, uh, right, the Board of Zoning?
There's a cost for appeals, there is.
What is there?
It's, it's a, just a tad over four hundred dollars. It's broken down like all our other fees, because we have to run the ad in the Freelance Star, we have to write a staff report, we have to convene the BZA. Uh, the big, the big cost in BZA appeals is, um, the, the advertisement cost. We pay the same rate that whatever the market bears at the Freelance Star, which is pretty expensive for, uh, block ads to advertise the case. Of course, citizens have a right to come out and speak in favor and opposition. And generally, there would be at least one person in opposition because somebody made a complaint to our office.
Would there, uh, then once the appeal, if it was upheld, you know, as far as violation, going to the state, you said, to appeal it to the state board, or how, what was the next step?
Um, in, in the zoning process, in our zoning ordinance, anyone who's aggrieved of a notice of violation has absolute right within thirty days to file an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right. And after that?
Then the BZA considers their case, there's a public hearing heard, county presents its case, the public has a right to come in and speak. BZA makes a ruling in ninety days. Beyond that point, there's another thirty-day appellate period, uh, and then, uh, the citizen or even a citizen who felt the BZA made the wrong decision, if they're aggrieved, they may have standing to file an appeal to go to the circuit court, and then the circuit court, um, extinguishes the matter. Beyond the circuit court is the Court of Appeals. If it's, if it's deemed worthy, then it, it could go on to the Supreme Court of Virginia.
Is it, uh, what's the cost, do you realize, for the, uh, after the Board of Appeals here locally, uh, to go to the state, the circuit court, I mean? Is that a costly?
Well, I don't believe you can go to the circuit court if I represent a nation of an attorney. I could be wrong on that, but you can, okay. So you could represent yourself, so it wouldn't be too bad, but you, you know what they say about people who represent themselves in court, that?
Yeah.
That might not be a very fruitful endeavor. So it incur a court cost for an attorney, basically?
We certainly have a lot of businesses out there, and these signs, 'cause I noticed one of them was the church, and they've got the balloons and the bubbles that are going through there. I don't think they do any damage. I mean, that's just my opinion and my own personal opinion.
You know, that sign, that sign's forty or fifty thousand dollars.
Yes. I know some of them are up to eighty thousand dollars. I think it's wrong that we can't fly the American flag, but yet fifteen feet away or right behind that sign, as long as it's fifteen feet off the right-of-way, we can have a flag waving, so I don't know what the difference is between that.
Zoning rules are quirky.
Yes. No, I understand that, I agree. But I think when we find quirky rules, we ought to try to do something about it.
I understand, yes, sir.
I'd recommend this board that we, we go and, uh, make it a legislative, uh, issue to have them review it, to see what the actual damage is, and see if we got any, like, like Mr. McLaughlin said, is there any new statistics on, on driving issues as far as people looking at signs and stuff of that nature, and have we seen that these signs have actually caused an increase? And since we can't do it, you know, I'm not sure if you're gonna get a valid, uh, analysis out there.
I would be glad to consult with the sheriff and see if any traffic accidents ever come back, you know, from somebody was looking at a sign and ran into the back of somebody versus somebody talking on their cellphone and running into the back of somebody. We have that data every, every, every day, I'm sure. It happens. Not from particularly signs. We have a lot of accidents.
I would recommend that if you're gonna invest twenty thousand, eighty thousand dollars in a sign, that, that you should, number one, I guess you should know about the, the ordinance, number one. And, but number two is, uh, there's a lot of money invested in that, and it's not gonna give you a return on your money that you would really like, 'cause moving signs do make it a little bit more interesting and noticeable from the road than just a, a light that comes on four seconds, and every four seconds, something shoots up there, too.
Well, you know, it, it's, it's a challenging for us. We have to enforce the law as it's written. That really is, we have no latitude to do anything else. I can tell you, sitting here, I've gone around other counties, driving around, they had the American flag flying. They got it waving, it's got messages on it. You can go to Pennsylvania, they got billboards that, um, have LED signs on them that change as you ride down the road. Right through the center of Atlanta, the whole building moves when you go by the interstate. Everybody scared me to death when I went down through the middle of Atlanta. The whole building changed to a commercial message. I'm going eighty miles an hour with everybody else on eight lanes.
In a fifty-five mile in Arizona, I'm sure.
You couldn't miss it. I mean, if you had eyes, you could not miss that sign in Atlanta downtown. You cannot miss it.
Troy, did you say we could maybe go and ask for a waiver for this locality?
Uh, that would be special legislation, and then, again, that's a, that's a legislative thing. I'd have to look to the county attorney on, on any type of special legislation.
If there is a chance that we could put a waiver or ask for a waiver, meanwhile, you know, I'm not sure what the rest of the board is, but I would certainly like to, uh, bring it as a legislative issue that these businessmen actually can use, their eighty thousand or fifty thousand dollars' worth of equipment they paid for, if it's not dangerous to citizens and drivers.
Mr. Skinner, I would say that we had talked about having regional elected officials dinners, and this is a time with our state legislators, and this is a time to put together a list of issues that all of us as, as localities deal with, and I think that this would be perfect to put on that list.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next item on the agenda is, uh, discuss our draft proffer guidelines, and Mrs. Parrish is here to lead us in that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. May I have the floor computer, please? The proffer guidelines were reviewed with the Board of Supervisors a couple of months ago, so I've just put together a very brief presentation to refresh everyone's memory and also to provide you with a few updates. I've taken advantage of the time that has passed and the fact that we have some additional new data, um, to plug into the, um, methodology and the calculations that changes the numbers a little bit, so I'll describe those as well. The proffer guidelines reflect capital facility expenses, and this is associated with new growth that occurs in the county, specifically rezonings. Eligible categories for capital facilities are schools, transportation, solid waste, public safety and general government, parks and recreation, and libraries. The proffer guidelines, uh, that are in your packet, provide some formatting and wording guidance, uh, for developers to use as they develop their proffer statements. The general standards allow for a credit for by right development, so if a parcel is currently zoned to allow ten units, uh, they could get a credit for that ten units, and then we would look to them to offset their impacts on capital facilities for any units above ten. It's the applicant's responsibility to justify deviation from the policy, and, and we do encourage that, and, and proof shown, um, the board can accept deviations. The, in general terms, required improvements are not eligible for credit. Most often, you see things like turn lanes that are necessary for the development. Um, you might see those committed to in a proffer statement, but then you might see staff, um, saying, "Well, we're not providing a credit for that because it is required by VDOT in order for them to develop." Uh, the guidelines provide for an annual review and update of the proffer calculations. Basically, what we have here is a series of calculations that we would each year update certain inputs. Uh, there are a couple of types of proffers. Generally, we see cash proffers, um, and one important item here is to ensure that the payment schedule is clearly defined for cash proffers, especially if it's a lump-sum payment. If it's a per-unit payment, the state code dictates that that's payable at the occupancy permit. And we also, um, look for our cash commitments to adjust and keep pace with the, um, with the price of a dollar over the years. So we have a, um, a requirement or, excuse me, a recommendation that the proffers adjust annually on January first with the CPI, and we generally do see that in applicants' proffer statements, they do commit to that. The other type of proffer we see is an in-kind proffer, and the policy states that in general, credit for in-kind improvements will not exceed the calculated cost of a facility. Uh, so for example, we typically wouldn't look at a, say, a park dedication or a trail dedication as offsetting schools, but in the end, if the applicant provides a good reason for that, deviation can certainly be allowed. Credit is permitted in these draft document for, uh, community amenities that lessen the demand on county facilities, and this would be something new, um, from our current adopted, uh, guidelines. For example, if a development was to include a community pool, presumably that would lessen the demand on our pool infrastructure and therefore a credit would be given. That credit could not exceed that calculated cost for a pool in our guidelines, though. Uh, we are seeking evidence of supporting value, um, an appraisal would typically be provided, and then we want to ensure that when land is dedicated to the county, that that land can support whatever the proposed use is. The assumptions, this is one of the changes that, um, I made since you last reviewed this. The US Census updated their, their estimates. As of July first, twenty-fourteen now, we have a new population number of a hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight, and that's up from one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-three-hundred-and-forty-eight from the prior year. So that has now been included as an input every place where that occurs within the calculations. Uh, the other data remains the same, um, the single-family detached, the single-family attached, and the multifamily are the three categories of housing that we look at. Um, those are the housing generation rates, and then land acquisition costs. We have not updated those, uh, but we would do that each year as we move forward. Uh, there is a debt service credit that is proposed in the draft guidelines. Um, this is another new item that is not part of our current adopted proffer guidelines. Uh, we found in researching other localities that it is fairly typical for there to be a debt service credit, um, giving credit for taxes paid, um, that would pay down debt service, um, which would be the same types of facilities that proffers are going towards. The debt service credit includes all existing debt service, other than water and sewer and service district debt service. Um, it backs out thirty percent of transportation debt service, assuming that thirty percent is tied to commercial trips, so it's trying to focus solely on the residential. Backing out federal subsidies received by the county solely for the purpose of paying debt service on certain transportation debt, and we're looking at an average new home value, so we're looking at three years' worth of data from the assessment office. So you can see those figures here for the different types of housing. In the end, the, uh, the debt service credit, um, you can see here between real estate, personal property, and other taxes, uh, credit for the single-family detached is almost eight thousand, um, credit for the attached is fifty-three hundred, and multifamily is thirty-one hundred. So the bottom line, these numbers all will look a little bit different because of some of the changes that I talked to you about. Actually, I should mention one other. The transportation has been completely reworked because that one is based on the capital improvements plan. And with the adoption of the fiscal year sixteen budget, we went ahead and updated the entire transportation inputs to that CIP. So the resulting recommended proffer value would be seventeen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four for a detached home, attached at eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-two, and multifamily at six thousand, five hundred and two. And again, we have the attached actually having a higher capital cost associated with it. And it's not that any single cost of a facility is higher, it's because of that debt service credit, because attached homes are assessed at lower values than detached homes. So that credit really makes a difference there. The adopted proffers are on the top row here, and then the proposed. So you can see the difference there. And then a county comparison, looking at the adopted, our adopted on the top row, the proposed on the second, and then some of the other different localities. Prince William was probably the most recent to update their proffer guidelines. Stafford is the other one, but I believe theirs are still in draft form. The final item that I wanted to review with you is an item from the Planning Commission. They are asking that the board reconsider the policy to allow excess projected tax revenues that come from a rezoning as a credit against capital costs. Typically, what we do is we look at thirty years' worth of tax revenues from a project, and if, over those thirty years, they would pay down essentially the capital costs, then we look at that as zeroing out the capital facility impacts. So the Planning Commission feels that with these new proffer guidelines, they're lower, they're more reasonable, they include a debt service credit already, looking at taxes. And so they're asking that the board reconsider that policy to look at capital facility impacts on its face and look at fiscal benefits as a separate item rather than combining them. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, any questions? Mr. Trampy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to touch on that last point. The debt service credit and what we currently have as capital facility mitigation, are we talking about the same taxes? Would we be double counting if we did both of those?
To a degree. The fiscal analysis, typically when you have a positive fiscal analysis, it's either because there are non-residential components to the development or you have a development where there is a commitment to a level of housing that we know is going to be above the amount needed on an operational side to support it. So there, on that housing side, if you have some housing that is going to come in with proffers, that's going to be a minimum square footage, and we know that the assessed value is going to be higher, on that part there, you are sort of double counting when you look at both the thirty-year credit and the debt service credit. But certainly not for anything where it's a commercial component that causes that positive revenue. And that's probably the vast majority of cases that we see.
Did the Planning Commission look at all at the possibility of having impact fees for transportation in lieu of the proffer, the transportation portion of proffers?
That was discussed on and off throughout this process, but never brought to the point that it was made of recommendation.
Other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Can you go back to the census slide? I have a question on how this works out. So when I'm looking at the, it looks like single-family detached generates three point zero four. So that's like husband, wife, and one child?
Yes, yes, generally.
And then on the single-family attached, two point one four, so it sounds like, on average, no children?
Right.
And then go back to slide eight. I guess I'm having trouble looking at, when I see the schools, and we just said, on average, that for a single-family attached, that's no children, and single-family detached, I'm going to go wrong. Single-family attached is no children, and detached was one. How are we getting that high of a school cost?
The, the actual, we actually don't use the population generation factors in the school calculation. We use a student generation rate. And that's it, student generation rate for a detached home is point five seven two. For an attached home, it's point five eight one, and for a multifamily, it's point one eight three. So the numbers, you know, when you look at the different sources of data, they don't quite match up. But the, all of the costs that go into the school, building a new school, are what cause that to be high.
So go back and say that again, you use a school generation rate, and where is that? So I would tend to trust the census data, but how is that calculated? Is it using some kind of history, or?
Right, the student generation rate, we merged the school's bus database with the county's real estate database, so that we could see how many students were in each type of unit. And that resulted in these numbers. So we feel like this is actual Spotsylvania County data, so it may be, in fact, more accurate ultimately than the data that we derive from the census.
And then, did you say that this is used to build a, the sixteen thousand calculated is for capital for building a new school?
Correct.
So I know in our forecast, I've heard it many times, that we don't with anything that's approved. And I did have a follow, let me back up a step. In the very first slide, or actually in the proffer brief, the twenty-three pages brief, it says that we can, we're called a high-growth county. What makes us a high-growth county? Because we really haven't seen high growth over the past five years. It's been less than, less than a percent, or?
Yeah, that's from the state code, and I don't recall offhand exactly what the calculation is.
Are we going to lose that status anytime soon? Or can we lose that status, because we're not seeing it?
It's over a ten-year period, as I recall.
Is it a rolling ten year?
Yeah, it's over a ten-year period, I don't, at the top of my year. Since the last census. Census before last, I believe. I'll have to, I don't want to shoot from the hip, but there is a, in the code, in the zoning ordinance for high-growth counties.
I mean, I think we have less students now than we had in two thousand nine. So as far, is it, so what is it using, each ten-year census, or is it a rolling ten? Or do you, is that what you need to look up?
I'll double check, but it is based on the census.
Okay.
I would have to look it up too, I'm afraid I don't.
Well, I think it's important, I mean, because maybe we don't even qualify for cash proffers based off of our lack of growth that we're experiencing. What is the growth over the past five years per year? Have we seen any, or down?
Yeah, it's hovered around one over the last several years. A little bit above one this past year, and we're projecting it, you know, to stay steady, about one point two five.
So is this school proffer, the sixteen thousand, seven fifty-one, and sixteen thousand, four ninety-two, is that based on building a school today?
It's based on building a school. It includes the building cost, and that's based on RE means estimates. We used a nationwide standard. Land costs, engineering of the site and the building, furniture and equipment, and then school bus expenditures.
But is that today? In other words?
Yes.
I've been told we're not going to build a school for ten years, but is this cost if we built one today?
Yes, it's an estimated cost if we built one today.
And if we did build one today, we take out a thirty-year bond. So is there a way, and I don't know, did the Planning Commission look at? We have forecasts that say we're not going to need to build a school for ten more years. So if you actually moved into a house, and if the developer moved all of this cost onto the home buyer, he or she is paying upfront for something that's today, that's not going to happen at least until tomorrow, you know, at least next year, if not ten years out. Can you account for that in this cost?
Well, the way that we look at this is, it's the cumulative effect of growth. So there may be ten projects that come along that each on their own will have a small impact, a very small fractional impact on the county's resources. But once you start to add them all up, at some point, there's going to be the need to expand a school or build a new school. So it's the cumulative effect of growth. And sure, the first buyer of that new home, their children may not attend a new school, but the fourth buyer of that home may end up in the new school. But there's just one, you know, expected offset to capital facilities associated with that home.
I mean, that's a very good point, too, and I'm not sure how the Planning Commission looked at that. So it might be the fourth buyer of that home. If we're going to build a new school, most likely we'll take off, we'll have a bond referendum and pay for that over thirty years. It just seems to me that we're charging, that that figure for schools, for single-family detached and attached is too much when you, it's considering building the school today, which we don't have to build the school today, and most likely we're not going to build a school. We've been told ten years, and even just say it's five years. So we're paying, you know, we're asking people to pay for something that's not going to be built. And then when it is built five years from now, or ten years from now, it'll be paid for over the next thirty, of which there's going to be times when there's children in the house and times that they're not in the house.
And the debt service credit, the idea behind the debt service credit is it's to acknowledge the fact that you are paying taxes towards that school or that transportation facility in terms of money that goes towards debt service.
I would like the Planning Commission or the board to look at this figure a little bit closer because we're not, we're not actually building the school today, but the figure is as if we did.
Got a couple, a couple for you real quick. And again, so debt service credit, I'm going to go back to this one, too. So based on the recommended proffer, twenty-five thousand dollars for a single-family detached. But the school's impact was sixteen thousand.
Correct.
And I get the debt service credit is what they're paying towards all of the county's debt, correct?
Correct.
The cumulative debt, their new residents, they're going to pay towards the old debt. So why are we giving them credit? Because now we're saying that this sixteen thousand, or all these factors are new impacts to the county. So why are we giving them credit for the old debt?
That is the recommendation that came forward out of the committee. We went through various scenarios of debt service credit, and the first one we looked at was trying to forecast into the future because these, that's what we thought was most appropriate. Ultimately, the committee wanted to move forward by looking at the existing debt and discounting it according to the existing debt.
So the impact, based on the proffer guidelines, is twenty-five thousand, and we're giving them credit towards old debt? And that's based on thirty years' credit? Or how's that seventy-nine hundred dollars developed?
Looking to Bonnie, because she really helped with this part. Based upon whatever the remaining term is of the existing debt. So generally, we issue debt over seven, twelve, or twenty years.
So you take the cumulative of all the debts over the different time periods and come up with an average cost?
No, this is based on actual debt.
Actual cost?
Actual debt, yes.
What people are going to have to pay. Okay, so the other question kind of comes up with, so we've got, you put county comparisons. Is there any historical data that shows what was actually paid? Because proffers are voluntary. So like Prince William says, they're fifty, or forty-five thousand dollars. Do they actually draw that? Or over, historically, how much have they actually gotten on this volunteer proffer?
I have not, yeah, I have not researched that.
Is that data available?
We can look and see.
I mean, even for us, even for the county, ourselves? I mean, what was our, historically, what have we seen? And then I had two other quick ones here, and I was going to ask, in-kind, and you, how do we, what is our process for verifying? You know, we've got developments come up, and they're offering a bazillion dollars in in-kind. I mean, how do we verify that that's good? Like, if they've got an appraisal done, we just accept it at face value? Or do we have to, on significant ones?
Yeah. Typically, we would look at the appraisal, we'd look at, we don't have any ability to review and verify their appraisal. We don't have, you know, we have an assessment office, but we do not have the ability to review and verify their exact appraisal. But we do look for what we think might be questionable aspects about the way that the appraisal is done, some of the assumptions, we can question those, but...
But if there's a significant difference between the appraisal and in-kind proffer appraisal and what we're assessing the property at? How do we come back and, do you, are you going to come back to us and say, hey, hold on a second, we don't agree that that's worth a bazillion dollars?
Right, yes, the way that these new guidelines are structured, we're going to default to the figures that we're using in our guidelines, our land values, and have that as the comparable. Because one thing we certainly can do is pull land values, look at raw land values over the last several, you know, couple of years, and see what the comparisons are versus what the assessed value, or the appraised value comes back at.
And I guess my last one, and it really goes, you know, we really present, our only option is proffers, not for growth, whether, I mean, we, somebody who just mentioned about impact fees or service districts or TIPS or something out that, to try to get additional. I mean, have we looked at those as possible proffer options, vice, just straight-up cash proffer or in-kind proffer, or all of the above?
Those are certainly options that are out there associated with rezoning projects. We don't typically tend to look at them as replacements for proffers, for capital facility costs. But it's something that we do have discussions with applicants on larger projects about. Ultimately, regardless of what occurs with a project and their proffer statement, the board can move forward with setting up service districts, separate from the rezoning action.
Thank you. Mr. Zbola?
Yeah, maybe I'm not fully understanding this formula and how we're doing things for the schools, but based on the three different types of housing that we have, we're saying that it's going to be this much money, I'm looking at the screen now, for schools. But are we really considering the size of the school in this factor?
Yes, we are. We have the estimated capacity for each of the schools. Elementary at nine hundred and thirty-six, middle at nine hundred and forty-eight, and high school at one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five. And we use that to develop a cost per pupil through the formula.
Okay, so, but these are averages. So if we, if we don't need a nine hundred-student school, and we only need a six hundred-student school, we're still going to build a nine hundred-student school? Because I mean, this is, this is where.
Right, yeah, these are all approximations. We had to choose a set of assumptions and move forward with them to come up with an approximation, yes.
That answered my question, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haddock.
On the county comparison, you said that a couple of these counties are currently redoing. Are they going to look more like ours, or are they going to go higher than what they already have here, or do you know?
Well, Stafford, they had another draft that was significantly higher. Right now, they've got a draft where they're at thirty-three, nine for a single-family detached. And if I recall correctly, they were up closer to maybe fifty thousand dollars at one point. So it looks like, as they continue to work on it, their number is coming down. And that's the only one that is currently working on theirs that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
I want to, I want to question a couple of things, and it goes with Mr. Zbola's question. First of all, you know, we built Cedar Forest for just around twenty-two million dollars. We built Middle Freedom for about forty-five million, and we built River Bend, I believe, for around seventy-three million dollars. Okay? Now, the question is, is that, here you just say that that middle school, you have nine hundred and forty-eight, and I believe you have nine hundred and thirty for elementary, something close to that, correct? And you have nineteen ninety-five, which if you take a look at all our super high schools, which are River Bend, Massaponix, we're well over two thousand, I believe, in those schools. So I'm not sure where you're getting the figures from, because... So I, I'm not sure where you're getting the, the figures from because when you take a look at what Mr. Ross said, you say single-family attached at 2.14, which means you're getting a single-family attached, which don't bring in a lot of students, or bring in, you know? And then yet, the single-family attached brings in one plus, two, two parents and one child. So I, I've been a little confused because I know what we've paid for the last three schools we put up, okay? And I don't understand why, when you go and look at the schools and you're saying single-family development and single-family, you go within $400 of... slide we are showing there.
Number eight?
Yeah, when you look at 16,751 and then 16,492, 150, something like 150 dollars difference in that, I, I don't agree with that. And I'm only speaking from putting up three schools. So why do we get the difference? And the other thing is, you said you base it on the average. Well, as we found in this county, when we put up Riverbend, we put that up because we were building, we were receiving 1,000 students a year on the average. That's one of the good times where we're putting up a lot of houses and they were going for big bucks and profits were not a problem for anybody, okay? But we also found that when we had economic problems here, and they were very bad, we still were able to put up a justice building and a safety building, and we found that the price of those buildings were 30% below what our engineers estimated it at. So just watching what you've said here, and, and again, I know what, what we've paid and, you know, I'm sure a couple millions off here and there, but, you know, I can tell you that I believe Freedom Middle School was about 45 to 47 million dollars, and I believe Cedar Forest was about 22 to 25, I would say, maybe 27 even at that.
The, I can tell you what the total price here is that we have estimated for the schools based on the methodology. Elementary, we have at 20,900,000. The middle is 31,476,000, and the high school is 68,433,000.
Okay. So my point to you then is even with those figures, 10 million, 20 million compared to 30 million for a middle school, there's $10 million difference in there, but yet there's only $150 difference in a single-family attached and single-family detached.
Yes. Because that's based on the student generation rates, and because of the economic downturn, we'd started to see people with children, more children, moving into townhouses out of single-family detached homes. So we saw an increase in the number of townhomes with children in them, and so very similar student generation rates between townhomes and single-family detached.
But our student generation has not gone up as much as we, in fact, at one point, we had actually lost.
Right.
We went low in students, and now we're, I don't know, we around 24,000?
Right. And, and this is just based on our experience. This is based on actual students in homes in Spotsylvania County.
Okay. I, I'm, I just question where we get these figures from because it's, and again, like I said, what you've estimated, I think we paid more. Just for the heck, you say 20 for an elementary, I think our latest school was, we can get that from the schools. But I know that Riverbend was well over what you identified as 60 million. Now, with the way the economics are today, maybe we could get that, we could get it for that. Because we found that everything else we built in this county has been about 30% less than what our own engineers have estimated. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Champy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there are obviously several questions from the board, so I don't think we'll, or at least, I, I'm not going to propose that we take a vote tonight. On the point I was making before about capital facility mitigation versus debt service credit, I guess I'm a little torn because on policy grounds, I would think that, I would argue that the capital facility mitigation, taking into account the other components, the commercial component, what have you, makes more sense than the debt service credit. And I would, just based on policy, I would prefer the, the former to the latter. I don't think we should have both. But from a public relations point of view, I know what's going to happen if we take out the debt service credit, pushing the proffer amounts higher, but then we give them credit for commercial and so forth. We know what we're going to hear every time we pass something where it's paid for partially by commercial and not, not totally by proffers, so I guess that's just something for the board to, to think over, but I'm in a bit of a quandary on that point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Ross.
Three saved round questions. You said about buy right after 10 units. Can you tell me the change on that again?
There's no real change. It's just carrying forward the policy that we allow for a credit for buy right development, and I use 10 units as an example. So, so if a project or a property is currently zoned, that they could build 10 units buy right, and they're proposing 50 units, we would look to them to offset their impacts on 40 units.
And so that is currently a policy?
It is currently in the policy. That's, so that's proposed to be carried forward in the new version, yes.
Okay. And then just a curiosity question, how many public pools with our population do we rate currently? Because we've got one.
Well...
I know my small town of 1,000 in Iowa where I grew up with had one. We only had 1,000 people. I don't think the Cortlandt District has any even homeowners associations that have a pool, so I'm, I'd love to build a swimming pool in the future.
Our adopted level of service is one per 20,000?
We need about six public pools? That's what we should have by your policy, by our policy? And we have one, okay? Just something to consider.
Thank you. That wasn't emotional, was it?
No, unless anybody wants, I'd love to, yeah.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. Mr. Skinner.
That, with Mr. Champy said, just because they build commercial doesn't mean that that commercial they build will actually generate, I mean, just because I put up a commercial building doesn't mean they're going to shop at my commercial building. They may still want to go to a different shop, so that's the concern I have, is that they're getting credit because they're saying, hey, they're going to spend money commercial here. Plus, with our guidelines, it seems like many of this commercial doesn't have to be put up until we have 1,000 homes up already.
Yes, that, that's correct. That the timing is important of when that commercial is going to come in terms of when it's going to start to offset capital facilities.
The only thing I'd like to look at is possibly changing the requirements for when commercial has to be built, okay? And we know we've got a couple of projects out there right now that they're going to have 1,000 homes and then they've got to go to commercial. My concern is, with 1,000 homes, what motivates the developer to continue the other 1,000 homes and not building the commercial of 200,000 square foot? So my, my, is just look at that a little closer, because I, you know, when we give them credit for something, I'm not sure if we're gaining anything out of it whatsoever on that one. And I'd like to make one other comment, and, and I agree, we probably need more public pools here, but we do need to take into fact that all those 129,000 people that we have, I know Lee's Hill has two pools in both of them, so there's definitely a need for more pools, but I'm not sure if it could be honestly based on a pool, because none of the people that are in Lee's Hill, I believe, I can't say positively, but they're either over at the pool right next to my house or down in the south side, and, and they get pretty crowded there. So what we need to find out is how many of these HOAs don't have pools and consider them, and then find out what that figure is and then divide it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I can say the Cortlandt District does not have any pools. Now, L'Oreala is right across the road, but, from the Cortlandt District, but there's not even a homeowners association in Cortland that has a pool. And, and our swim teams have to practice in the winter, either at the YMCA or at St. Michael's High School, which is privately owned, and we rent the lanes from them. So I would say we're, we're definitely short on public swimming pools.
And I agree with you, Mr. Ross. Absolutely. I think we need to look at that. We need to look at, as he said, there are some localities that have no pools whatsoever. Okay? But I wouldn't want to spend another pool in my district when I have two people there that can go over there. There are some people, we even offered Lee's Crossing to, to become part of the HOA and then they could use that pool. That was up to them to deny that, but those are things that I think we need to look at.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. McLaughlin?
Just, just one last one, kind of follow-up with Mr. Skinner. So on a mixed-use project where they calculated proffers, it's 17,800, when we give them credit for the commercial, is it the, when do you start counting that credit? Because as you're saying, it may, they may not build that commercial for 15-plus years. Does our calculation assume it's paying from day one or at year 15?
Most of the time, we're beginning that calculation at build-out because we do not have that committed phasing in the proffers.
So we don't count it until...
Could be 10 years of build-out and then another, you know, 15 years of tax revenue.
So we're not giving them credit? Okay, so it's not day one, they're getting credit on that mixed-use project?
They are, I'm not sure I understand your question.
So some of the mixed-use, they're offsetting their proffers by providing commercial, which is essentially, it's better than residential, right? It pays for itself essentially, or less services. So I guess the question is, when we're giving them credit for the proffer, when do you start counting the tax revenue or their receipts from the commercial mixed-use piece of a project?
Well, it, it's an assumption that that tax revenue is going to come in in the future. Their proffers are based on the proffer statement that is adopted when the rezoning occurs, when the board adopts it. So whatever figure is in there, if, if the proffer is 17,834 and they come in with a project that says we're going to have a project that ends up paying for its, for a portion of the capital cost through our tax revenues from the commercial aspect, and therefore we'd like to discount our capital cost contribution to 5,000 per unit, then that 5,000 is what is actually paid per unit from building one, from unit one that comes in.
So if they don't build their commercial for 15 years, are we losing?
In my mind, yes.
So, and I think that's kind of what Mr. Skinner was talking about, phasing a project, and maybe that's something we have to go back and look at and, you know, if, that if they estimate the commercial's not going to be built for 10 years on a multiple, on a, a, a long-term, a large project, maybe we don't give them the full credit for that commercial, or there has to be some kind of an equation that helps recover some of that costs. Kind of what you're, thanks.
Thank you. Further questions? I have a couple real quick. Statements also. What is the break-even point for assessed value versus services rendered? I see that we have the average value, home values for the past three years based on data from the assessment office.
Or if Bonnie has that number by chance?
She's shaking her head.
She's shaking her head. We don't have that number, but I will point out that the 357,000 or something close to that, that's included in the proffers for the average value. That's the average value of a new home over the last three years. That's not the average value county-wide.
Correct. So I, I would assume that the average value of the homes in the county is not what the new home, homes are being sold for.
Correct.
Yes. So most homes then are not paying for the services that are, that they're getting. And therefore, the commercial that we get is supposed to make up that gap on operating, not necessarily on, actually, I should take that back, not at all on capital, because we were always going for a 80/20 split of commercial versus residential, and that commercial would make up the operating cost. And I think we've got it twisted around going after the capital cost, which then, who makes up the operating cost? We are still in a hole. So whether or not we, we deal with commercial phasing or whatnot, linking it together and, and sectioning it off to be for capital and not operational, I think in my mind is, is a, is a bad way to go. So that was, that was really it. And if you can get that number to the board of that call. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think as we do it currently, the credit is for what's over and above the taxes necessary to pay for the ongoing services.
That's correct.
Correct. That would be the new proffer policy. But my point is that existing homes are valued less than the services that are generated. So if we're trying to get more commercial in here for the tax revenue, that's to offset the operational part of the budget, not the capital part of the budget. That's what we should be focusing on. Any other questions? I think none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is our work session, and just to bring back an open dialogue we had previously concerning baseball process discussion, just to give a, a board a brief update. We did post comments that are, we've been collecting from county admin, and they've been posted on the board, as well as questions have been provided to us, the board, and the answer to those questions, they're all out there. Staff does not have a presentation, but we'll open up and be glad to clarify anything that you need to clarify, or if we can give you more information, or go get additional information if you like. But everything's been posted out for the public, including the amount of comments we've had, as well as the other information that, and the questions that the board has asked, we've provided to each, each and all board members.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Next up? Yes. Last week?
We've basically, everything's been out since last week, and we've posted it all. It's actually, everything is posted on the web right now, I believe. We can specifically, we got a list, Kathy, of everything we posted out there to date. I don't have my, I could read about, I don't have my iPad with me.
Chair and board members, I can tell you briefly that, of course, the com, the first thing on that baseball information webpage on our website is the place where people can put their comments on, as you know, and they're still coming in. And then there's a comment update through last Friday that you all have seen as a PDF document on the first 327 submissions, some of which are staff tests and things like that. Then there's the deadline extension letter and the, the letter requesting the deadline extension. Then there are documents, I don't have the specific names without looking, but that, from the May 5th board special session, and the lease revision of May 4th, and the April 28th documents that were originally posted April 29th. And there's also a Davenport and Company document out there and the lease comparison. I hope that's helpful.
Yes. And then the information, Mr. Ross, that you request on that present value, that's posted out there.
Mr. Skinner.
Mr. Chair, at the last meeting, I think we were talking about having a two-member committee to start looking at lease, at least, obviously, the lease that we've had out there is not something that is fondly accepted by the citizens. And so do you have any feelings about what you'd like to do as far as put those, that two-member committee together? At least we could start working and seeing what the variables on the lease could be, what could be accepted, what wouldn't be accepted?
Is that a question to me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I think at our last meeting, we had talked about that, and one of the things that was unknown was whether or not Major League Baseball was going to extend the deadline, not the Hager Town Suns. And so I think that we had in our original motion, a, a committee that Ms. Hidig had proposed of two board members and two EDA members to go forward, and, and I believe what we should do is collect all of the questions and comments and concerns into our version of the lease. and concerns into our version of the lease and present that. And we had talked about hiring outside counsel with specialty in these type of negotiations. So I would like to see a committee move forward based upon that. Because I do think, and let me say this, because I've been hearing comments, and I know that it's, it's, I guess, easy to take shots at something that is not, not very palatable at this point, which is the old lease, which I think that's why we tap the brakes and ask for the extension to go forward. I've said before, and I will say again, and hopefully folks will hear, is that from my point of view, I believe that what we should do is get the best deal for the county. So just because a team comes forward and says, this is the deal, you know, you, first of all, you never accept the first deal. And secondly, you don't accept a deal that somebody has given you and tells you that it's the best for you. So that is the purpose of this committee, is to then take our terms and say, this is what we are looking for. And in the end, if they don't like it, well, they can go somewhere else. But the, the point is to continue to negotiate to get the best deal possible. And I think that having a committee formed would facilitate that, but we would continue to do it as we have, where questions and concerns and other board members' questions that have come in get plugged in and answered and moved along, which I think is what we need to do. Because this is a process that not only we should be involved in, but the public should know exactly what we are trying to get out of it. And if something is a deal-breaker from their point of view, and it's something that, that we want, then the deal breaks. It's that simple. It's not something that we are going to go to the ends of the earth to make happen simply because we want it to happen. So simply negotiating the lease or negotiating terms to get to a better lease, I think is the prudent thing to do. So I would like to see board members who would be engaged in that process, and EDA members who would like to be part of that also. And again, all board members to be updated, and as much information as can go out to the public as possible, so that everybody knows what is happening and what is being negotiated, and what is on the table and off the table. So are there any volunteers for a committee of this? And I would assume, we could do, we could do more, Mr. County Attorney, than two. We would just have to post every time that we would meet.
Correct. It would be a special meeting. Right.
Correct. So if there's interest in more than two, I think that that would be the way to do it. That's just me, of course. Mr. McLaughlin?
A couple of questions. I mean, have we got any indication from the team? I mean, they were pretty adamant here that this is the best deal that's ever been offered in minor league history. Is there any indication that they're even going to talk? I mean, I mean, the way it came across, it's, you don't want us here, we won't, we won't, we don't want to be here. So before we spend money, you know, every time we advertise a new hearing and hire an attorney and do all these other things, I mean, the lease was so far off. I mean, if they're not willing to come and almost flip it around one-eighty from where it was, do we even want to go forward? That's the question. What are they going to, what are they going to give on? Do we even know? I mean, that's the problem, because it was, I just can't see them coming far enough based on what, that presentation they gave us. So that's my concern. Have we even reached out to them and said, what are you willing to do?
Well, they have expressed interest in coming in June and having a work session with us to discuss these issues. But I would say that this would be like any other economic development issue. A prospect comes and asks for something, and we send them back what we're willing to do. So I think by, by assuming that they won't go any further, if they don't want to go any further, they don't want to go any further. But we wouldn't know that until we actually put forward what our deal is. And if they want to then negotiate from that, fine. If they don't, then that's fine, too. But, you know, I would rather not kill it now by saying that that was the best deal that they want to do, and I'm assuming that they don't want to negotiate any further without us at least putting forward our proposal back. So again, is there, are there any volunteers for a committee?
Mr. Yakubowski?
Yes, Mr. Ross.
Gary had mentioned at a prior meeting, having these meetings that, you know, as follow-ons or predecessors to our actual board meeting, is that out of the context of this scenario you're putting forward?
No, I think anything's on the table. Right, no, anything's on the table. We can craft them however you, you would like or however it would work best. Mr., are you, Mr. Sebel?
Yeah, just a comment. I know, I don't know how you guys feel, but after a board meeting, I'm washed out. And, and this is too important to be washed out and be a part of. I think that we should, if we're going to do this, that we do this prior to. Be fresh, new. Negotiations are just that, negotiations. They bring their offer to the table, we bring our offer to the table, we talk back and forth, we come up with the best solution. If that solution doesn't work, then the negotiations have failed, the project is over. I would be willing to, to work on this committee, but not with just two members. I've been in a two-member committee already, and it's just too much work for just two people.
Are you saying you would like more board members than just two? Because there would also be at least two EDA members?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so more than two board members. Well, I will volunteer myself. Any other volunteers to be with me?
Mr. Chairman, I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Ms. Heidig. And I would ask to reach out to the EDA also and see if they, I see the chairman sitting here. I might just volunteer you. But, Mr. Rutherford, but if anybody else would be interested in doing that, I know that we do have citizens, too, that have offered their expertise and their, and their input, too, that would like to be part. Again, we don't want a fifty-person committee that is the working committee. We'd like to keep it, you know, small, under ten people, absolutely. But to get and gather, and that's why it's important to get the information from Kathy of what is being inputted into the website and what people's comments are, so that we can take those and put it together and craft a better deal. Well, so far then, myself and Ms. Heidig are on this, and we'll, and we'll get with the EDA and set it up so that we can have our first committee. I would propose, before we do, we entertain any outside counsel or outside expenses, that we put together a list of our demands, issues, whatever you'd like to call them, and have board input and discussion about that. Because I don't want to waste county money if, if there's no sense in moving forward.
Just a little clarity, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I won't be here at least for Mark. So my understanding is that the committee will meet, will go over some directions, some issues, taking account, the comments and all the information that's been put out there, come back to the board, and then present that to the board. And at that point, if we desire to do outside counsel, that would be done at that time.
Correct.
Correct.
So are the committee meetings open to the public? Are they going to be here? How's it, are they going to be? Is the public going to have input to the committee meetings? I mean, how is it going to be structured? Because I think that's been one of the biggest complaints that everybody had, is it was all done behind closed doors and nobody knew what was going on. So...
Well, I have no problem sitting right at that table and having people sit right there and listen to everything that's going on, because I think that's important. One thing, though, I would like to stress, though, is civility. We have seen outrageous behavior, and I understand that it's a very stressful situation, but at the May fifth meeting, we need to be civil. We need to make sure that we treat each other as we would like to be treated. So when the public is here, I want them to hear, I want them to be involved, I want to have their input. That's the whole, like I said, the point of the website. But as we're discussing these things, for people to yell out, comment, perhaps throw things, is just out of the question and will not be tolerated. But open it up, sit there, listen, you know, afterwards, if you want to talk, if you want to email, if you want to Facebook, anything you would like, that, that's how we get a better product, is by getting that input. And I think at the end of this process, if we have the deal, and you're never going to get a hundred percent, obviously, because there will be some people that just will not want anything to go forward. But if the board decides at that point to move forward with some type of product, and the team decides that they don't want it, well, then they don't want it and they can go somewhere else. Yes, sir. Mr. Skinner?
Mr. Chairman, I, I still would recommend that each one of us appoint, rather than having, you know, we could get thirty, forty, fifty people in here that want to make a comment. My recommendation, at each supervisor, appoint someone as a citizen from their district, whether it be a businessman or just a regular citizen, to, to sit on this committee. And if they want to get, we'll know, we'll let them know who they are. And if they want to take input from other people within the district, let them be known that. But I think we have to somewhat limit it, because, you know, you could be spending a lot of time here with public, and my recommendation is just, let's designate one person, let the supervisor pick it, whatever you want to.
Well, my, my thought on that was to have two board members, two EDA, and then two citizens that have expressed interest. And when I said to have the citizens here, that they can hear what's going on and see us work and understand exactly what the process is, not to have a fifty-person committee, because we won't even get through opening remarks.
Yeah. And as long as that, what you're saying is you're limited to the, the committee, even the citizens that want to be on this, those two members would be, you know, those. We wouldn't sit here, or you wouldn't sit there and listen to fifty other citizens speak about it?
Well, no, I think we have public presentation time at our board meetings for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, you know, Mr. Chair, I was going to say, along that lines, each of us can appoint somebody. Let it be, you can appoint yourself, and there'll be a seven-member committee, and then everybody has input.
That would be fine.
You know, whether it's the supervisor, his, their planning committee meeting, or a citizen. And that way you can gather, everybody gets some input.
That sounds like a good idea. So we have a seven-member working committee. Each person is appointed by a board member and can be themselves. Well, plus EDA. Yes, well, it's imperative that we have EDA on there, so it would be nine, if that's agreeable. We can have, well, everybody can appoint one and then two EDA members.
So...
May I ask, I heard someone, did I hear someone say that the owner was going to be here in June? Do we know when in June? In other words, is there a...
We will let them know when we would like to have him here.
Okay, okay.
I would like to have a product first and then be able to present that. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, as far as the...
I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure we weren't working against another arbitrary timeline.
No, this is our timeline. Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
It would be seven, it would be seven members, which would be the whole seven boards or whoever they appoint.
Correct. Plus two EDA members.
Plus two, so to be on the safe side, we will probably publicly advertise the meetings.
Well, I, I...
Okay. Well, for the committee, because I don't know how many board members, but we will publicly put, post those meetings once the dates are settled.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think there'll be, I don't think there'll be, what we're trying to do is keep the two that you've appointed, yourself and Ms. Heidig, as the two board members. Okay? And then the rest of us will put somebody out there that will represent their district. Okay? All right? So as far as the need to advertise legally, since it's only two board members, but I'm saying advertising is fine, because we do want the members and people to know when we're meeting, they can come here and listen. I have no problem with that. But I just want to make sure that we're doing it for that purpose, not because I think we've all decided that we're only going to stick with two board members, the rest will be civilians. It'll be five civi...
Well, just to simplify it, I would say everybody gets to nominate somebody, as Mr. McLaughlin had said. That would be seven. We add two EDA members. We notify the public of every meeting that comes up, and that way, if any other board members want to be here, and then also the public knows every time that we meet.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Taylor may have a couple of words, since he will be at the helm at that point, and may have a different viewpoint.
I'm just working on my scorecard over here and trying to make sure I have all the players straight, and wanting to follow, and of course defer to Jim, but as, as I'm hearing it, first of all, the board is discussing the creation of a public body.
Yep.
The, the meetings of which would have to be advertised in any event, regardless of the size.
There'll be two. But if there's going to be more than two board members, you'd have to advertise it as...
The committee, seven or nine?
Nine.
Am I following that correctly?
Nine.
Two board members, five citizens, two EDA members?
Yeah.
Where we're at presently?
Basically, I have nominated myself, put myself on the committee. Ms. Heidig has put herself on. The rest of the board has nominations. If they want to put themselves on, they can, or whoever they feel that they want.
Or they can serve themselves.
Correct.
Right.
They can, they can be there themselves, and two EDA members above and beyond those seven.
Just trying to make sure we're keeping track.
Yes, sir.
The last question is, when, when will we know what the schedule of those meetings are, Mr. Chairman? Because we need to talk to the people, and you're looking at, one, how often will you meet? Because when I go to ask someone, they're going to ask me that question. So do you have any idea on that, sir?
My personal opinion would be to start with dates sent out tomorrow, and we start the working committee. And, and Mr. County Attorney, is there any problem with having appointees via email, so we don't have to wait to another board meeting? For instance, if Mr. Trampy has somebody he would like to show up to the meeting, and the meeting has been decided to be June first, and he says that that is when the meeting is, his person then can come in and represent him.
If that's, I mean, if that's what the board wants, I don't see any, his representative will go to the meeting, the representative that he's choosing.
Okay. So we don't need board action to put them on these committees?
Well, I mean, if, I think the board...
Well, I would like there not to be any board, because if...
Wants that to happen, then the board can just indicate.
I think, I think it would be valuable at this point, at least, if we're going to do it this way, that we have a motion from the board so that we know how to proceed.
Right. Well, I was trying to craft my motion and make sure it fit within the realm of possibility. So my motion would, I'm sorry, is there more discussion? Mr. Ross?
I just have a couple of things to say. One, I, I found, the staff has just sent me the answers to my question. I would just ask in the future, you'd send them, how they came out was, please see attached Board of Supervisors communication regarding online baseball comments. I think my answer started on page thirty-five of that, and I did skim, skim through that, but I did not know they were out there.
Okay.
And, and the communication that was sent really doesn't say, hey, these are the answers to the questions you asked. They just say, online baseball comments. So in the future, for staff, if you'd please send those directly back to me, at least so I would know that those answers are out there. And second of all, I just want to, for the record, because there's a lot of confusion, I think, from constituents and how I stand and how I'm representing my constituents. So I personally feel that the free enterprise system is the best system of using money, not the government to get involved in it, and that we need to see fiscal responsibility at all levels of government. So for those reasons, as I represent the constituents at Cortland, I cannot support something that's going to take bond money. We talked tonight about schools. I know we gave the schools an extra seventeen thousand dollars this year. Thanks to Mr. McLaughlin, freeing up some road money, we got another three hundred and twenty. And I know the thousand for the schools, I think we're still nine hundred thousand short, of which I think Dr. Trampy and I voted to, to delay the raises, which would have given another six hundred, closing that gap. So we have schools to fund here in Spotsavanny County. We also just tonight talked about pools. We have one pool for a hundred and twenty-five thousand residents plus. Our proffer guidelines say we should have six, and we're renting pools. So I see teeming with baseball, something outside the scope of government. I'm just saying that, I do applaud you, Mr. Yakubowski, for making this an open and transparent process and the things we've talked about tonight, and I respect that. But I just want everybody to know where I stand and why I stand. I think if we do have, and this, this project as it was, and I know that might be changing, is a fifty-million-dollar project. It's thirty-three million for a stadium, that's twenty-five million from, from Spotsy, plus another two million in interest, making it twenty-seven million, plus a fifteen-million-dollar parking garage that's required as part of it. as part of it, as it is now, and that might change, of which the team would put up 8 million out of 50 million. And that 42 million would be bond money that we would have to lease, as it was, at 4.25% interest rate. We also, and I need to look at that net present value, but I just wanted to make the record clear, that's why I can't support this. I'd be happy to do tax incentives on the back end, and I do thank you, Mr. Jakobowski, for this time, but also for making this a transparent process on the way forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint a nine-member committee with seven representatives that are appointed by the board. No need for board action to be appointed. A courtesy email sent to the county administrator that sends it all out, so we know who sits at the table, who they are. Myself and Ms. Heidig have already appointed ourselves, and we would ask the EDA to then appoint two people. In conjunction with that, to send out a list of dates that we can start meeting, because I know we all have multiple meetings that go on, so it's going to be hard to try to find a time that works for everybody, but if we can start on that process, that would be great. In addition to that, to have Kathy, as she has done, compile the questions, go through and find, you know, the one that repeats over and over and over, the concerns that were brought up at the May 5th meeting, compile those all in, and then we would then have something to start with as we begin the process. And that's in the form of a motion. Any questions?
Six yes, with Mr. Ross voting no.
All right, thank you.
Next item, I believe, is closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, this would be your resolution to adjourn in the closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in the closed meeting for discussion and consideration of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, and or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, specifically discussion and or consideration concerning the aforementioned that, as it relates to the county administrator. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in the closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically consultation concerning the case of ATFD LLC and Hazelwild Farm Educational Foundation versus the Planning Commission of Spotsylvania County, Virginia. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23711A1 and 7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
Thank you. Is there a motion? So moved. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in a motion to convene in the closed meeting, were heard discussed or considered in the closed meeting.
So moved.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Trampy?
Aye.
Ms. Sebel?
Aye.
Ms. Heidig?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
And Chairman votes aye. Next on the agenda is new business. I have one item I just wanted to bring up and ask if staff can have this for our meeting in June. I was contacted by the gentleman who's on the committee getting the dog park moving along, and the land was just conveyed to them. And they are requesting a donation from the county. So, if we can have that for June, I have several questions. Who owns it? Who's going to maintain it? What happens if they default? All those types of things that we need answers to, but if we can get that for the board's consideration in June, I'd appreciate it.
Can you, Mr. Chairman, provide the contact information?
Yes, sir, I'll forward you the email.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I probably should have done this earlier when there was more people here, but I'd like to make a quick statement, that I believe that the Republican majority on the board has accomplished much and will continue to advance the principles of efficient and effective local government, which I have supported for the past three and a half years. However, they will have to continue without me, at least for the next four years. When I ran for office in 2011, I was proud to be a Republican, and today, I have no regrets about the last four years. But without the nomination of our party, I will not be seeking reelection in the fall. I know that God has a plan for my life and that there is still a lot more that I can and will contribute for this county, commonwealth, and country. Meanwhile, I'll continue serving my family and friends, and I appreciate all the support I've received from staff and everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just say, Ms. Heidig, we've been friends for many years, and it was a pleasure serving with you for the past two years, and we still have six months to go.
Yeah, I'm not gone yet.
So, you're not gone yet, but I just want to say that I've really enjoyed it, and I'm disappointed that you will not be here for the next two years, but obviously wish you well and look forward to working with you until December 31st. Any other new business to come before the board?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
I'd like to appoint Mr. Jim Joyce, the Chair, the Vice Chair of the CBRC, to the baseball committee.
Anything else from anybody?
To have board approval?
No.
Yeah. But if you would, email it so that you can email it out, like I said, so that when somebody shows up, we know who they are, we can, you know, do that. Anybody else? Seeing nothing else, there's a motion to adjourn? So moved.
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...
I don't want to adjourn. I'm supposed to say...